Okay, hello everybody. That's not too loud, is it? Start a little bit to start off with. Uh, thank you very much for coming tonight and uh, this is going to be the last in this series of panel called Ladies. For awhile anyway. Uh, I think that we threw up some other trouble and something else and I'm sure we'll get to that here within the next month or so. Uh, but anyway, thank you very much for coming here. And I'm gonna go ahead and do just a kind of a brief synopsis of well, where we've been through on uh, starting out here. We'll go through pretty quickly, but it's kind of a, a history of where we've been. I always think that we need to talk about, a little bit about where we've been before we can talk about where we're gonna get to. I think that's important, it's just in perspective. Uh, when we incorporated there in 1999, before we incorporated Benita Springs, uh, we had a lot of conditions that were pretty rough, that's a reason, uh, reminds me of our Prince and Estero there. They've got their reasons for incorporating, we had some reasons too. I think they were relatively apparent, uh, we had a lot of traffic congestion, we didn't seem to be able to get much attention from uh, the county and I think it was more of a geographic thing, I don't think they intentionally neglected us. I think it was more geographic. Uh, there hasn't been any improvements for about thirty years north, uh, north and south, and about twenty years east and west. Uh, crime, there was some gang activity and that kind of thing around. Uh, we got lots of complaints about, there was uh, drug sales and uh, poor response time, there wasn't any patrols, those are the kind of calls that, that we were getting there right out of the gate. And there was a degraded community appearance, we only had one community code enforcement officer and he drove all the way from Fort Myers every day. When he went to work, he got up in Fort Myers and he came all the way down here and going back, really inefficient, some inefficiencies there. Uh, plus the flooding, yeah, as you, most of you will probably recall, in 1995, the world knew Benita Springs from the pictures in the paper, from these pictures and on the news of somebody with all their belongings walking through water. That's what they knew about Benita Springs, that was their visual image of Benita Springs. What we were known for, despite having beautiful beaches and great communities, is still, back then, this is what we were getting to be known for, this was our brand. Then we had little or no environmental protections in place other than what was provided by the county, they did the best they could, I think, but we had no ability as a community to buy our own uh, green infrastructure, our own uh, environmental lands. If we found something that we wanted to protect, you know, then we had no way of doing it. We had to kind of beg on to the county to see if they would do it for us. And we were in the, uh, I think in danger, real danger of losing our identity as a small town, I mean, real, real danger, uh, in that, that regard. This is, this is what we are, right here, as of course you're aware, this is the infamous DRGR area, right, and here that's in Benita Springs. Of course, all of this is DRGR up here, in this area, but this is the part that's in Benita Springs. Uh, of course, uh, Benita Springs, as you can see, is surrounded and defined by water. We've got so many waterways, Spring Creek, Oak Creek, Liker Creek, Imperial River, uh, and it's, it's Estero Bay, Little Hickory Bay, uh, and of course, this is just one giant river coming through here, which is the Corks River Regional Ecosystem and Watershed. Uh, and I think, hopefully, a lot of you saw the news that we were just able to acquire another six hundred and something acres of really great land out in this area, right in here in Collier County, really important. Like, thank the governor for that, that was great. Nine million dollars, I think it cost, but it was important. It was important for what everybody's been talking about, that water restoration, that flood control, that's what it takes, it takes storage out there in that way. Okay, so we had to create, we wanted to create a strong foundation for the future by investing in our own future. That's important, that's important even today, and I think we need to remember that. And we can't forget that you can't be afraid to invest in your own future. If you're not gonna invest in your own future, who's gonna do that? You don't believe in yourself, if you don't believe in your community, who's gonna do that? So the community's plan and the council's strategy for the last fourteen years has been to do that. Problem solving via community visioning like this, professional analysis, weigh-in competent evidence, kind of a professional way to look at things, and then implementation and investment, try to figure out what the most economical way to do things are. Once you decide, this is your problem to tackle, if it's not your problem to tackle, you just don't do it. And then traffic, we, uh, what do we do for traffic? Well, we, first thing we did, we invested in a bond, bond issues, so we could go ahead and fix failing roads, we invested in a growing transit system, uh, and we did all kinds of stuff to increase the capacity to where we don't have much of a traffic problem today. I say that, and you probably had a traffic problem here, but you probably have believed in that, but it was worse, it was worse. Now, uh, code enforcement, we believe in, I think, uh, in, in a couple of things when it comes to community policing and code enforcement, in boots on the ground. We needed to put more code enforcement in effect because there was a lot of accumulated debris, a lot of disrepair around, and we really needed to get the community to go ahead and help itself, and get our neighbors to be good neighbors by cleaning up things. That was what we did. To unify their, uh, Benita Springs, we put in together all kinds of ordinances, and again, I, I think, again, when I think of our Prince and Estero, what they had to look forward to, uh, which is, it was a busy time here for the last ten, fifteen years, coming up with these ordinances, not that ordinances fix things. Ordinances only fix things if you can make them work, if you can, uh, if you can regulate them, if you can actually enforce them. If you can't enforce them, you might as well save your time. Ordinances don't fix anything, enforcement doesn't. And so, we were able to, I think, smarten most ways to go ahead and get things done when it comes to architectural standards, maintenance codes, and roadway planning here recently. Uh, we also did a lot of work to reduce flooding, so we were quite busy with that for quite a while. And we haven't had, haven't had, not gonna work, much problem with that so far, since that time. And it's been a lot of things, a lot of things we've done, but a lot of it's been in conjunction with the Southwest Florida Water Management District, Public Works in Lee County, and doing a lot of clearing and stacking, and a lot of other programs that helped reduce the chance of flooding to happen there. We also did some implementation, uh, when it comes to water quality, and implemented fertilized ordinances, tree preservation programs, and invested in other, other water quality, uh, quality projects. And uh, so far as preserving our small town charm, uh, one of the things we did was to create that park system that everyone is so crazy about, and it is a great system. Uh, when it comes to Depot Park, these were great investments. They, they may not have been popular at the time, a lot of times we'd buy pieces of property and they'd be, we'd get criticized for it. And you know what, rightfully so, people have the right to do that. They got criticized, why did you buy that park? Why are you buying this property? Why are you in the real estate business? People know now, people know why we did that now. That investment started to pay benefits, and then when it comes to Riverside Buck Park, uh, that is one of the best, uh, that is the, uh, most popular special events, outdoor special events, uh, place in Southwest Florida. Uh, also, uh, building sidewalks to connect neighborhoods and people, that was, been a project that we've done. It's investment in the community, when you build sidewalks, it connects neighbors together, allows people to come outside their houses, it builds community pride. These smaller things like that are what help build community. And then, uh, just there, probably about, I think it's 2008, I think, we rebranded our community. Now, at the time, and I think some people would argue now, that that wasn't a big deal. That was a real big deal. At the time in 2008, that was before we had become any kind of an economic force at all within the, the Southwest Florida region here. Uh, that was during the Great Recession, so during that time, we took kind of a, maybe a little bit of sabbatical there and said, well, while things are going bad, what can we do to help ourselves, to help rebrand ourselves? And we went through this, and a lot of it was logo and stuff, but we started to say, what are we gonna say about ourselves? What are we gonna keep reminding ourselves? Small town charm, big bright future, that's who we are, that's who we are. And we're gonna keep reminding ourselves that, everything we do needs to wrap around that, we need to wrap that around us like a flag. And we have, and we've begun to believe in that big bright future, and we've made a lot of progress. We have become the respected leader in economic development partnerships in Southwest Florida, Benita Springs. Now, going back to 1995, who would have thought, in 1995, then flash forward to 2014, 2013, that Benita Springs would have its name again and again and again identified, identified with being a respected economic development partner in this area. Hertz, Kamudo Group, all kinds of stuff. We have been a tracker of quality businesses and quality community development and quality citizenry, ever since then. It is starting to work, and the government-like and right is story, is a real success story. I say government right, because government-like probably isn't the exact thing that we are. Government-like, I think, would denote something, uh, probably, uh, a little different than what we are, I think that what we've done is give ourselves permission to think. I know that some people would want to just, okay, you're just gonna outsource everything, you only need three employees, and everything else you can do outsourced or whatever, but what we've done is kind of make that decision, just like you do. You don't decide that you're gonna just have a skippy next door, or cut your grass all the time and do everything for you. You figure out if you, well, I may need to have a construction carpenter, or I may have to have that, or, I mean, maybe that's something I can do myself, you can bring it in-house, you can farm that out. You make that decision, especially in your business, you make those decisions like that. We decided that we were gonna do the same thing, and I think we've been pretty successful with that. The downtown events are really important that we do, it brings us a sense of community second to none. Benita Springs is king of that, we do that really good, and it does, it builds community pride, it gives those people a sense of that community, and that pays dividends. That is real, it's tangible, you can feel it. And because of, when you do that, it builds, makes people come back, it makes them volunteer, it gets you, you know, it gets them to, to take advantage of all kinds of opportunities and to participate in that community, it's important. We received national and regional recognition. The Forbes Magazine, if I'd told you in 1995, that Forbes Magazine would have listed us as one of the top twenty-five cities to follow your bliss in, right? No, you said, huh, huh, no. Not, not too bad, not too bad, right? Also, by our, our permitting practices that we put in effect, we decided that probably there in 2008, 2009, 2010, in that area there, we're gonna become a facilitator, we're not gonna be a roadblock, and of course, when no is no, it's no, but you know what, we've decided that, you know what, if you're gonna get a no, you're gonna get it really quick. That's important, as a contractor, I can tell you this. The answer is no, I need to know right away, so I can get to know what my next move is. But then, if it's gonna be a yes, get it out the door there, do it right, and do it, do it, uh, in a, in a manner that, that doesn't cost everybody a lot of money. And I think that, well, with the stage two uphill, which is one of the things that we did farm out there, and we did privatize, uh, we've done a great job, uh, in, in doing that. And we partnered with Benita Springs Utilities, the fire department, in our economic development community, to go ahead and get this, and we did get state recognition, the, the governor has recognized us several times as being the Florida Department of Environmental Opportunity, uh, gave us this great quote here, that, uh, that we're a good pattern for that. And this is what a lot of people, the community, the surrounding communities, uh, you get people from Naples, this is Winter in, uh, Winter in the Park, Winter in the Park, it is Winter in the Park, when it happens. Uh, Holiday in the Park there, uh, it's a great time, it, it's known all over the area, it's known from Naples all the way up to Ponte Vedra, it's a great time, people come and enjoy that, we're very proud of that. This is the Fourth of July, I mean, these are the things that are making Benita Springs known all over the place as well. So, the next step, the issues we may face in the future. How many of you here think that, uh, you know what, nobody's ever gonna move to Benita Springs ever again? No, no, that ain't gonna happen, is it? Nope, there'll be somebody, right? There'll be somebody that comes here, after all, every one of us came from someplace else, or our relatives did, one or the other, alright? So, we came here, it was nice. I don't care if you came here twelve months ago, or you came here eighteen months ago, came here three years ago, you came here 'cause you liked it, or either that or someone kidnapped you and made you come here, like your husband, or someone like that, but, uh, or, or a golfer, or some, some, one of those kinds of people. Uh, but, but we all came here for some kind of reason, and it's a nice place, it's still a great place to live. Back in 1970, when Bill Nelson was at high school, believe it or not, and he did graduate, believe it or not, contrary to popular belief and my perception overall, in 1970, Benita Springs, nineteen hundred people, funny, right? Nineteen hundred people, alright? We didn't have a high school then, did we? No, we didn't. In 1980, nineteen eighty, that doesn't seem that long ago, five thousand four hundred and thirty-five people, but that was a pop-up of a hundred and eighty-one percent, right? Still just five thousand four hundred and thirty-five people. Nineteen ninety, still not, wow, not that long ago, only thirteen thousand people, and then it winds on up until, like, in 2010, forty-three thousand people there. What's it gonna be like, twenty-five years from now? What's the population gonna be? And, and to those who would say, you know what, well, you know what, we're just gonna have to make it miserable and awful here, and that way no one will come, right? Wrong. It won't happen, you know what'll happen? People who don't mind living in miserable places won't still come here. It will happen, it, it will happen. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, is there, already, if we don't improve one more building, uh, one more development or one more thing, that there is enough room here already with vested properties, with people who have the right to build on their property, to have a, a year, not a year-round population, but at least a part-time population, a hundred thousand people, a hundred thousand people. But that still doesn't make us that big of a place, you think, oh, a hundred thousand people, that's a lot of people. But, but what would they have? Oh, they had said in 1970, if we just said fifty thousand people. Oh, end of the world, right? I mean, if you had two thousand people in your town and they said fifty thousand people, I can't even do the percentage, and how much bigger is that, right? I mean, it's a lot. We're just talking about doubling it possibly, or something like this. So, I'm not saying that's anything I want, I'm not saying that's what I desire, I can't wait, it's math, okay? It's just math. Alright, now we're gonna go ahead and get to where we come and talk about some things here, I just wanted to give a little background about where we got to here, and some of the challenges. And one of the first challenges, we'll go ahead and have a, a community conversation here about, is the DRGR area. And, let's see. Very cool. Alright, I'll get that around here. If I look like I'm walking around like I have a hurt back, it's 'cause I do. And, uh, I, I heard it. Now, the, the DRGR area, and just a couple of things to get you started in our conversation here. Every, I think everyone who's in this room is familiar with the DRGR compensation that we've been through. Uh, the DRGR is a large area, as you know, uh, that is throughout Lee County, uh, to the eastern, uh, part of, uh, Lee County out there. Uh, it was the Density Reduction and Groundwater Resource Area. And, uh, in Benita Springs, we have our share of that. And, uh, when we first formed our city, uh, one of the first things we did, we wanted to go ahead and do our own comprehensive plan, and so we popped the DRGR out there, and we said, well, let's, we'll keep it the same for now, but let's do a study here in the next couple of years, this was in 2000, the next couple of years, and let's do a study here and see if there are any parts of the DRGR that should be in there, that shouldn't be in there, or if everything should be left alone. Well, here we are, we still haven't made a different decision. I can't say that we haven't made a decision, I guess you could consider not making a decision, deciding not to decide, maybe, I don't know, that's weird, right? Do I sound like Donald Rumsfeld there? I don't know, I'm pretty, anyway, a little bit. Uh, but, okay, so, uh, that's something to consider, if we have the litigation and restor, restoration need to be done? If it does need to be done, should it be done by private sector, if it takes thirty dollars, or both? Here's the area right there, let me see what's the next here, here's the area, this is kind of a, my arm almost wants to better. That certainly not helping. This is usually where I screw the whole thing up and have to talk to us and something. Alright, so, I would like to know what you think. The area, we have just gotten our, our committee, has just made some recommendations, and I know everyone has their perceptions of the DRG area. Some people will say, it's a pristine area, it's a pristine area, leave it alone, leave it the way it is. That's okay, that's, that's an okay thing to think, but as a lot of you know, it's, it's not a pristine area, completely, there are pristine areas in here. Uh, if you look at this area right here, this is predominantly farm pasture right here. Uh, of course, the lake here, this is Citrus Park, not pristine, predominantly. These are all farm pastures out, out in here, and this is a mine. There are places in here that are, that are worthy of, of restoration and or, I think that, nobody, nobody would disagree, that are, uh, uh, that should be restored and or should be preserved, and that are preserve areas. So, with that, what do y'all think? What do you think, just overall, should be the next step? The actual next step, and one at a time, uh, the actual next step that we're going through is the city council is gonna have, uh, the, uh, council look at the committee members that we had, take a look at this property, uh, look at their recommendations, and they have a list of recommendations along there, which I'd like them to put on here, you're welcome. And, uh, sorry. And, uh, what we're gonna do is take a look at those and, uh, see what's going on, but I'd like to see if anybody has anything to say about the area, or anything like that. Anybody wanna talk about DRGR? Are you just as tired of talking about it as I am? Anybody? Anybody going? Ah, there you go, I knew Alex would say something. There you go, Alex, could you hand that back to Alex?
Alex Grant.
Twenty words for life, Alex.
First of all, I was on the local planning agency for, initially for four years, and then I was on the city council for four years, okay? And, uh, if memory serves me correct, when I was on the city council, 2004, 2008, there was an effort by the Lee County School Board to rezone forty acres of the property that the school board purchased from a realtor here, that at one time was also in the local planning agency with me, uh, to be used as a school bus barn. And, of this property, uh, uh, some of which was submerged by rainfall during the June, October period every year, here was located on Benita Grand Drive. As I remember, the city council at that time was not in favor of putting this, uh, county school bus barn in that location for environmental reasons. I believe you were on the city council with me at that time, you remember that?
Yes, your honor, I do. Well, yeah, go ahead, Alex, you got anything else?
Well, uh, the, uh, point that I'm trying to make is I know that you have been very much in favor of putting a high school in that location, and, uh, the problem is still there, uh, to some extent, on that property. I mean, I toured that property a, after our last meeting here, to make sure there was still water on that property, and it was, uh, and this was in October, I believe. And, uh, I just, uh, felt that if you were going to put a high school, you would wanna put a high school more in an area that's more, uh, closer to the urban, uh, area, uh, like you have, uh, the position of putting the library, uh, location in an urban area, which is a smart idea. So you would naturally want to put, uh, a high school within a couple of miles of a library too. And so, uh, we do have some available, uh, uh, properties on Imperial Parkway, which we could use for a, uh, perhaps not only a high school, but also a combination of another elementary and a middle school together with a high school, and have an educational complex in one area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, and, uh, just, just from, from my recollection of it, Alex was right, uh, there was a time, but the school board, what they wanted to do, they wanted to build a elementary school there, and with a bus barn, a large regional bus barn there on the site, uh, and I believe, I believe, that the controversy was, is that we said, well, no, you're gonna have to get a comprehensive plan amendment to do the bus barn part of it, the school board says, no, we're not, we had a discussion about that, and that's, that's where it all ended up at, is that they said, well, the heck with it, we're just not gonna do it. Uh, now, well, now, since we've kind of merged into this other discussion, and I guess, in this particular sense, they go ahead and, you're right, I have no objection of there being a school on that site. Uh, and, uh, I'll, I'll make an argument here of why. Uh, that piece of property, that, uh, that some would say is unsuitable for that, but because it's in the DRGR, uh, I believe this is Benita Grand right here, right? So, uh, that site is around this area, someplace near someplace, I'm not gonna be exact, around this area. Uh, so, high school, everybody knows what a high school is, right? Buildings, kids, kids, right? Kids, 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 buildings, parking lots, that kind of thing like that, right? Uh, what else is on Benita Grand? Benita Grand over here, ooh, the fire department, right? The city's major fire department, built in the DRGR, is it not? It is, isn't it? Is it flooded? No, no, they did, they did okay, they're, they're alright, they're doing there every day, and I believe there's a meeting there quite often. That's in the DRGR, how far away is that? About a half mile? What about the, the city's central sewage system? It's like over here, it's in the DRGR as well. So, I don't think, and I, you know, we can argue all night about this, but I don't think there's anything that really physically precludes building a high school in that area. Is that where all get built? I don't know. I don't have any objection to it, but then again, I mean, I, I, if somebody wants to come up with a piece of property for the school board, anybody here who's got twenty million dollar piece of property in a better place? Stand up. Give it to this group of people sitting over here, and they, they'll take an art game, yeah, go ahead, if it's a better place there. No, there, there's no problem with, with that, the problem is, I would say this, again, just very simply, and it's a good friend of ours, Gary Price, used to say, will we allow the perfect to be the evil of the good? Will we allow that? And in this case, is it a perfect place ever? Nah, of course not, no place is gonna be a perfect place ever. Will it do irreparable damage that will never be repaired? No, of course not, that's not true either. But if it comes down to it being here or not in Benita, are you willing to say goodbye? I'm not. It's as simple as that. We can argue about it, and argue about it, but until somebody rich comes up and coughs up a piece of property and says, here, take it, this one's better, I'm not willing to take that chance. I want a school in Benita Springs, a high school in Benita Springs, DRGR or no DRGR, and it isn't for any other reason than that, it's as simple as that. Now, anything else on the DRGR? We won't go any deeper into the school thing, hopefully, but if, if anybody else, hey, here you go.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Gallagher, and I'm not really good at, at speaking off the cuff, I usually come with a piece of paper when I talk, um, but I, I feel like I needed to, to say something. Um, the DRGR is a very important piece of property, um, it could be very important for holding water. And one of the, or a couple of the recommendations that came out of the task force were to, uh, gather data, we would have to have a contract for people to gather data, the city contract, and to model it. If we had the data and we had modeling, we would be equipped to make decisions, we could put in scenarios, we could find out where the hurt would be in the DRGR for a particular, um, particular building or whatever. And we could also, uh, help with the, uh, figuring out where the water would flow and various things, to see where the best place is to put things, and what things to put where. So it would allow us to make better decisions as if we should build, where we should build, or what we should build. So I'm advocating that not anything be started now, until we get some decisions on the recommendations, particularly these two recommendation, recommendations from, uh, from the city council. Uh, and I'm hoping that we, we, we do this, so we will not be going ahead blindly. I would like to see something done once and for all for the DRG, DRGR, but I'd like it to be a fair, um, accurate decision. In, in addition, um, I did want to say that one of the things in the DRGR that I think is very important is that the wellfields, most of them for the city are located there, not all, but most. And there is a wellfield protection ordinance that, um, I guess holds, holds land with certain area around the wellfields, that actually goes out into the DRGR some distance. And as long as we're drawing from the aquifers that we're drawing from now, the higher aquifers, uh, we need to make sure we keep that area pristine. The reason is that the sheet flow, that's the water that flows across that land, not just major flooding, but it flows across that land during season all the time, is able to sink into the ground and purify itself. to sink into the ground and purify itself and recharge those aquifers. And yes, there were studies done that said there is aquifer recharge out there. So we need to know where it's happening, and we need to keep those areas clean, not having, and when I say clean, not having contaminants get in there, things like automobiles, service stations, septic tanks, all of those things contribute to the pollution of the land. I'm sorry, I could say more about that, but I think the wellfields are very, very important. And when I say that, that is our drinking water. Remember, that is our drinking water. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, right there. Mayor, I'm kind of curious. I'd like to ask questions concerning the fire station that's there. Now, I don't know when that was conceived, I don't know when it was built, but they must have gone through some studies, obviously, they just didn't decide, here's attractive land, we're going to put in a fire station. So could you help me understand what was done in the standpoint of process, due process, if you will, with respect to developing that, which I consider to be a fantastic location, potentially for a high school, because where it's located, we all know what's going on around this country. It's isolated, it's out there, great place for the buses to come and go without competing too much in the way of traffic flow. But relative specific to the fire station, could you help us understand how that came about?
Okay, I'm going to take a stab at that, because at the time, Danny Borley was chief of the, at the, of that fire department at the time. I think the planning process went something like this, there's a piece of property, let's buy it, clear it, and let's build it. That was the process. That's how it happened. Was it, I'm paraphrasing there, but that's how it happened. That's how it happened, so. Ah, the good old days, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's how it happened. So that's not as much looking at anything as anybody's ever done. The utility, when we did the utility out there, and I was president of the utility at the time that that site was created, that was a different process. We went through a great deal of environmental permitting. We actually went to the county commission at the time. We went through a long drawn out process to get permission from the county commission to build out there, and everything, everything went well. As you can imagine, some people in Citrus Park didn't want to see a sewer park next door. That happens quite often, I imagine. And, but I think that as sewer pipes go, been a pretty good neighbor, probably, so far. And they're right, the wellfields out there, it is, Carolyn's right about so many things. And there is, we do have a wellfield ordinance, and there are some things that need to be added to it. Benita Springs Utility is always concerned. I mean, if they're not concerned about the quality of our water, I don't know who is. I was having a conversation today with someone, and I thought, you know, there's some people who don't, that would like not to trust Benita Springs Utility's opinions when it comes to the groundwater resource area and where they draw water out. And I find that almost kind of amusing, mainly because they're the ones that are directly concerned with it, and they actually treat the water, too. So if we don't trust them to draw it out of the ground, do we actually trust them to put stuff in it and treat it? Are you right? I mean, they're the ones, I mean, we, it's like, yeah, let's worry about, they're going to, you know, lie to us about this other stuff, and then we're going to turn our back and let them do all kinds of things to the water chlorine and whatnot. They're a good utility. They have a lot of great people working for them, they have a lot of great consultants working for them. They know what they're doing when it comes to this. The fact of the matter is, is right now, and Carolyn's right, there's a lot we need to do, because right now, in this area where the wellfield kind of crosses I-75, there's a wellfield all along this area, and along here, it crosses I-75 and comes into this area. And we've also got a wellfield out off of Terry Street out there. But right in this area here, cow pastures, guess what cows do? Yeah, a lot. There's cow pastures all over the top of that area right there. And I don't, that's probably not the best thing in the world, yeah, so. So that's the problem I had with the DRGR in the past. I mean, just that designation. I think this area, and this area, and this area, I think all of this looks like that because of the DRGR designation. I think that that's the crime of the DRGR. And you know what? That's way retrospect, it's not fair, it's probably not a fair critique. Had to do it over again, we probably should have done it a little differently. But allowing agriculture, cow pastures, and mining, and that's it in the DRGR, and you were worried that one home for five acres or whatever it was is going to hurt something? What? What? Really? That's what we were worried about? We're not worried about a thousand head of cattle on twenty acres? We're not worried about the wat, that water quality? We're not worried about the farmer that goes out there and pumps the water out, pumps the water in, puts all kinds of fertilizer pesticides? We're not worried about that? That's, that's not bad? That's, and like I said, just pointing it out because it just seems a little weird that we're worried about kids in the school. I mean, let's face it, they're gross, but. I got kids, I know. They're gross. You know, they're not exactly bovine, I don't know, in some ways, I guess. Anyway, but anyway, I make a little light of that, just trying to lighten it up as I usually do, but you, there's a lot of truth here, there's a lot to be done, but I don't think some of the stuff that's feared is that scary, really. And some of the stuff that's already happened and it's gonna, and it's allowed right now is really bad. It's really bad. So I think there's a lot to be done. And Carolyn's right, we need to implement a lot of these things. Anything, anything else before we move on? Yeah, yeah, go ahead. We have the microphone. Antonio, thank you. Everyone, that's Antonio right there. Man?
Hi, my name's John Griffin.
Go ahead, Alex.
Hey, Ben, how are you?
Hey.
I think that, you know, they should allow the school to be built out there in the DRGR. And I know that that property, I know where it is, and it does hold a little bit of water, but you got to remember, too, along Benita Grande there, there is no ditch system for drainage. You know, the whole side of the road is a ditch. So I think that's part of the problem with it holding water out there. That, and I was over there when they were building the fire station, I was on that site, and a lot of the people out there, once that was built, it caused them to, you know, upgrade all the drainage and everything, and that's actually helped keep it from flooding over in that area where those residences are. So I think putting a school would help upgrade some of the ditches to remove some of that water so that there's not flooding, only have a hurricane.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else about the DRGR? And like I said, yeah, okay. And don't, nobody thinks we're going to solve this night, right? I don't want you to get all excited or anything, because it's not going to happen.
When you talk about water retention and returning water to the aquifer, one of the things that you get when a high school is built is a repurposing of fifty-five to sixty acres that the school sits on. The, I had some rather intimate knowledge of Island Coast High School when it was built up in Cape Coral in 2007. And on their fifty-five plus acres, you get a building, little parking lot, you get a football field, a baseball field, a softball field, and every other square inch of the property that it sits on is retention ponds to gather water that comes into that part of Cape Coral. And all of those retention ponds are putting water back into the groundwater. So it actually, putting a high school in, when they re-engineer the property there for catchment of groundwater, may actually have a salutary effect on water in that particular chunk of the DRGR.
All right. Anyone else this time? Anyone else before we move on? All right, let's move on here. And thank you for your comments there. And like I said, the city council got their work cut out for them. Their committee that we had do this, they did a great job. They did a fantastic job, and we really owe them a debt of gratitude, and we need to show that gratitude by actually coming to a resolution. I agree with Carolyn there, we do need to come to a resolution on it, so. Hopefully we will. Now, downtown redevelopment, this is some of my favorite stuff here. When it comes to the down, we'll speak, we'll have a conversation briefly about that, about your wishes and desires, and I'd kind of like to hear about, I'll tell you shortly what we've got working on it, and then we'll find out what you all like to see down there. That's the fun part of it. Bamboo property, of course, is five acres that the city owns down there. The intent of council at the time, if you, a lot of you will recall, it was a pretty well worn down piece of property that had, it was blotted, severely blighted. We didn't think that anyone was going to do any investment, no one had a vision for that area, no one was ever going to have a vision for the area. It was pretty well primed and everything else. We cleaned the area up, and we, with the purpose, with the purpose at that time, the intent, to put it back in the private sector, to be the economic spark plug for redevelopment. That hasn't happened yet. And because what we've been looking to do, there's different parts of this. As you can imagine, the downtown area, although there's a good grid system down there, we've always known that you've got to have incentives. Life's about incentives. I don't know if any of you are a fan of economics like me, but that's what life's about, incentives. Nothing happens without incentives. Animals, human beings, nothing happens without incentivization. It doesn't happen. You don't get out of bed unless you've got an incentive to do so. And so that's the same thing with downtown area. Why would anybody do it, do anything down there? Well, we had to make it safe, we had to make it clean, we had to make it attractive, we had to get a social and cultural heartbeat to it. Done. It's safe, it's one of the safest places around. It is statistically, because of these young men and, well, these young community placing officers back there, it is safer than the city of Naples. Give them a hand, please. It has been that way for probably the last eight years. They've done a great job there, and that's something that when you, you learn that when you, your medicine's working, you keep taking it. That's the medicine back there, those guys back there. Thank you very much, guys. So it is safe, you know, we've got that social engine down there, that cultural engine, which is Depot Park and Riverside Park, great things are happening down there. We had to incorporate the surrounding community and be sure that it was going to be this walkable community. That was the vision, it's been the vision for it. In order to do that and to have the development happen down there, though, you couldn't develop a lot that was fifty feet wide and by eighty feet, when, like you said, fifty percent of that was going to be retention, twenty-five percent was going to be parking, and you're going to end up with a ten shed, is a building. It just, the math doesn't work. So what do you do? So you have to do this municipally, you have to do it communally. And so what the city decided to do is that first we have to set it up to where, you know what? You can build zero lot line to zero lot line, like the city. We can, we are going to have architectural standards, we're going to have incentives like no impact fees, we're going to do things like that. We had to set that all up. It took a long time getting all of those ordinances in place. Well, we got all those in place, but that's not enough, because you still don't have any place to put the water, and you still haven't placed a park. And I think it's kind of important, just to have, park, point that out to me all the time, where are you going to park? Where are you going to park? And he was right. Where are you going to park? So we need to fix that. And then what we're going to do, we entered into a tax increment financing deal with the county, to where we're going to be able to finance the municipal parking and municipal water runoff and water quality in that area. That's going to be the deal changer right there. That's underway right now. It's going to be to the tune of eighteen million dollars. That area will pay for itself. That's the way taxing and financing works. As the area gains in that taxable value, that taxes, the taxes that are collected from that overage of taxable value goes back into the area to pay for what's going on. So it always pays for what's going on, and it is sunsetted to where as soon as it's paid off, it goes away. Goes away, and it starts giving to the entire community. So I think that's a pretty awesome thing. This is what it used to be like. It looked pretty cool, black and white, everything was in black and white back then, isn't it weird? I don't remember that too much, I don't remember what color, but some of this was. I think this is an interesting photo, I don't know what year it was, but look at there, it's the cottages along the water there. There's the Lyles Hotel. This was the Bamboo Village here. This is where Ben used to go drink, right here, the Bamboo Tavern, right there. The lady laughed at that, so it's not that funny. Making a note there, mental note. Of course, the railroad track, and this is Depot Park over here. And as you can tell, that is nothing like growth, which is still a great little subdivision over there, Imperial River through here. And this is, of course, what is known, known as Bamboo. And, yeah, that's about it. So we are going to stick with some of that character there. This is kind of the artist rendering that we have done, that more or less shows kind of the architecture. I mean, as you notice, this is the vision of the Bamboo area right here, and you'll see that there's still a promenade on both sides of this for the public sector. This is what's envisioned, it doesn't have to look like this, or something, something to this effect. On both sides, we want the public to be able to still walk up and down the river and have access to the river along the sides there, but we want to be able to have cafes, possibly, restaurants, maybe some places to live along there. This is, like I said, melons flying through, what is that? I don't know. Not a pumpkin, never mind. Birds flying in the air, everything will be wonderful. Pat will be driving his little minivan along the airport right there. And that's nothing. Pat's like, I'm so glad I came here tonight. Anyway, so, but no, I think it's a great vision for that. How are we going to make that happen? Well, once we get done with the municipal parking and that water part of it, we're going to do an RFP. And the RFP is designed to do just one thing, is to go ahead and say, you know what? Development community, use your imagination. What would you do? Make us an offer on the property. And it may be, hey, we're going to give you a million dollars, and this is what we're going to build, if you let us build this. Or it may be, you know what? If you let us just do this, you know what? You got to give it to us, and we're going to do this a really great thing to it. Who knows? There'll be all kinds of things there, right? All kinds of different proposals. And already, we have some really, really unique, really famous restaurant properties and restaurant owners that are interested in participating in this. I mean, you can use your imagination on what kind of a restaurant or what facility would want to be along an old cracker type river along there, a lot of them would. So I think that we've got a lot of, a lot of things that we can do there. The other things that the downtown area we want to do besides economic growth and quality of life things is, there's been a lot of talk about a community center. I'd like to know what you would think about doing a library down there. Do you like the idea of a library in downtown? Or do you, would you rather keep the library where it is and expand it there? That's being discussed right now by the library task force that has been put together. The complete streets part of that, that's part of the thing we want to do. We want to be sure that people have access to transit and are able to walk to their houses or ride bicycles or whatnot. And, wait, I got to post. What am I doing? And but along with that, we want it to be nestled within the natural environment. That's part of it. It's part of what we've been doing along here. We want to be able to have lots of trees and shade and sustainable development along there. There it is right now, the way it stands. So what do you think? What do you think, what do you feel is the inevitable, what should be, what we try to have it happen down there? Because we can actually control this. It's really hard to control the evolution of a community, right? I don't think you can really control evolution to begin with, if you believe in that kind of thing, which I do. Not a crack, I tell you about that. But, yeah, what do you think? I mean, what would you like to see? Do you envision it being really less dense with just small little stores? Or do you envision it being a real cityscape? Do you think it'll work like that? Do you think that in order for us to have transit and be able to be a walkable community and to have that vision of complete streets, it's going to take some density? It's actually going to take, what? People? That's, that's, that's kind of what's missing there right now. It doesn't seem like it because of all the traffic. But you really, to have complete streets and to have a kind of a, something work on the way of a municipality, whereas you've got a dense downtown core, you've got to have people. If you're going to have people, you got to have density. You got to get over that, oh, fifteen units breaker, that's, oh, that's a lot. It's not. It's not. It's very little. So what do you think? What would you like to see down there? Just, I mean, anything. I don't know, who's got the microphone? I do right now, right? Now, if there's something else, you got it? There you go. Carolyn?
Carolyn, again. Could I start out by asking the question? Because a few years ago, there was a proposal for closing off Old Forty-One at least one way. I'd like to know what the city is thinking regarding closing off. That's a main thoroughfare now. I mean, closing it off, in my opinion, would not be a good idea. However, if you're However, if you're going to have something that is really, really walkable, you cannot have a major throughway going through there with all of these cars, even at slow paces. So, I don't know if, I'm sure the city has thought about that. The other thing, we had, I came from Virginia. There's a little town in Virginia called Acquahquan. It's a town that sits on the river. It's known for its art festivals and so on. And it's, it's built up a little bit and is very quaint. I also have just recently visited the National Mall. I don't know if anybody knows what that is. Right across the river from the main part of Washington DC. And they have managed, even with the high-rise buildings and all of the hustle, bustle and traffic, they have still managed to make it walkable and have traffic coming through. So, I like the idea of having a small town feel to this project. Having business come in would be great. Would help everybody. Everybody would enjoy it. My, my other question too, other than the streets was, are we actually going to sell this land to developers? Are we going to lease it to them? So, if you can answer some of my questions, make some comments, please. Thank you.
Great, great questions. And you know what? I think it's directly to the point of what we're hoping that this municipal designer that, that we have hired and this design-build pairing that we put together there comes up with is the answers to some of those questions or at least options to some of those questions. Because that's nail on the head there. How do you create that really dense livable community but you're still able to cross the street? I mean, and like you said, it's like a magic act to me. I mean, I, I see some of these areas like you're talking about. And even in South Carolina, I went to Greenville. Greenville's another example. It's like, it's amazing. I get chill bumps with that river that they've got through Greenville and that downtown area. It's amazing what they've done. But you can walk there. You can, I mean, you can enjoy the environment. And when you go down by the river, you think you're in the mountains someplace. And within 30 seconds or so, you're back in the downtown area. So, it is, I think it just takes good planning. There, there are two ways, and I think that you've got, you've got, you've got to pay for that. And I think you've got to buy good professional quality advice on these things. And I don't think we need to reinvent it. And so, I think that's the answer, is to, is to see what they come up with. We're also, you know, entertaining the thought. I think Councilman Simmons has thought about hiring somebody else who's an actual urban designer to really give some comment on that. So, I think that that's, that's really the answer to that. It's just good planning. We're going to have, and we need to listen, more so than that. A lot of times, we want to put our preconceived notions on it. Man, I don't want to, I don't want to see this or I don't want to see that. Sometimes you're going to get news that you're not going to like to hear, but it's going to make it work. We need to do that. That's what I, that's what I hope we do. I think we, hopefully, take, take heed of that. Now, the other part of your question so far is, are we going to lease it? Are we going to sell it? Are we going to give it away, this first property? I don't know. That's what I think is exciting about the RFP process. I think that there'll be all kinds of different options right there. And I, I think that the council will be, hopefully, we'll end up with five or six different ones that we can kind of weigh those different options. So, that's the answer to that. Yes, Ben, and then I'll come back over here.
Ben Hershey said, I remember when I first came to Bonita Springs to build a home. It was about 10 years ago. And I remember the real estate agent at the time said to me, this will be a great one, downtown project. I'm going to screw up the name. I know, Atamarian or something. It was something along that, something from Naples. And the city council approved it, then it came back for reconsideration, and then it was highwashed. Again, and then we all know what happened to the county back then. I don't know what the answer is, but we've got to do something. I mean, I've been waiting 10 years, some people have been looking at. You know, this is not going to make a big urban sprawling kind of a thing. I want to walk the downtown area. I'd like to go to Comfort Point and go to my box there. Or I have to go down, somewhere down in Naples. I want to drop my money here in my community. So, whatever it is, please build it and they'll come. I don't know what the answer is specifically, but I'm all in favor of it. Let's do it like yesterday.
Oh, yes. Somebody get a check from that guy. Yes, if there's somebody over here, and then we'll come back on this side.
I don't need a microphone.
Oh, we want to be sure, we definitely complained that nobody could hear from the recording.
You're familiar with Andres Dueney?
Oh, yes.
Have you thought about bringing him over?
Yeah, there, there were some people that want to go ahead and have him come in here. And I'm sure that they're going to be one of the ones who are, who are applying to do it. Thank you very much for that suggestion. And Alex.
Yes, Alex Grant, former city councilman, 2004, 2005. When I was on the city council, I looked at this property carefully. And looking at the coastal high hazard storm surge area, I believe that there was over 97% of that 5.27 acres that's bisected by the Imperial River on that, that property was located in a coastal high hazard zone area. And I don't know how the insurance companies would tend to approve major construction in that area now if it was for public purposes where the public was responsible for any buildings in that property. That might be a different situation because that would be a self-insured system by the public. That elevation, I believe, also, right along the riverfront, is about six feet or so in elevation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else? No? All right, why don't we go to the wall? I think that we, I think that we've all got high hopes for the area right there. And I, I have all the faith in the world. I'm not only actually financially invested in the community through my business and through my home and like all of you, your homes and stuff, emotionally invested. My family's from here. My family's always going to be here. I, I'm with Ben right there, way in more than just our first names. This has got to happen. I, I have to see through this because I want someplace to go when my back really starts hurting me. And I want to be able to go down to the coffee shop. I want to be able to go down and talk to my favorite guys at the barber shop. I want to be able to live there and not have to drive anywhere. And so, I don't think that's a bad vision. I think that's a good vision. We'll see. We'll see. Hey, this is what we used to be, you know? This is, I remember this. This is what, this is what Bonita Springs, a long time ago, back in the 60s. Four miles of Bonita Beach on the Gulf, swimming, chilling, fishing, right? That's, that's what we were like in the 60s, kind of a vision of it. We were a fishing village and in a great place to fish, a great place. I mean, those of you who were back here then, oh my gosh, I mean, just nothing but just pristine beaches. It's still a beautiful place. It's still a wonderful place. So, this is where we started talking about public access and beaches and waterways. Is that who we still are? We went through the visioning process. When we went through the visioning process, we, we started, we considered that, that moniker we used to have, Gateway to the Gulf. Is that, is that really who, all we were or who we were? And so, I, I think it was, the decision that we kind of mutually came up with is, no, that's not all we are. Of course, you can get to the beach from here. We do have lovely beaches. We have great waterways. We have all kinds of stuff like that. But can we be that for everybody? Can, can, we should we be that for everybody? I, I quite frankly, think that it's not physically possible to be that for everybody. Obviously, it's not physically possible. So, who will want, be the ones who want to go to the beach? How do we, how do we not, if we don't accommodate that in some way, how do we at least regulate that? How do we, how do we as a, how do we be sure that the people who live on the beach keep their quality of life, that our roads aren't overpacked? And that people have a reasonable, people who live within this area, this region, we'll say, this general region, at least have the ability and the opportunity to get to the water. I mean, I think that that's a fair assumption, that people should at least have the ability or at least the opportunity to get to the water. In some, you know, I mean, sometimes it's going to be really crowded. That's just always true. So, you know, the idea is, do we do more parking? Do we do a shuttle service? Do we do nothing? We're pretty good at doing nothing so far. We're pretty good at that part. We got that down, right? We, because we really think about it, we really haven't done anything in the, in the last few years. Although we, I think the city council has made a couple of, made pretty good use out of a couple of vacant spaces and right of ways and so far as making some extra parking, you know, ten spaces here, five spaces there. You know, that's fine. But again, when we think about, you know, okay, we're 50,000. What happens when we become 70,000 or 80,000? What, what happens then? Is, is there a low limit? And I think they're finding out in Yosemite and places like that, that the answer is yes, there's a, there's a practical limit to that. Is it, and is it just a misery factor that takes care of that? I, I don't know. Maybe it is. But I, my purpose for bringing this up is not because it's easy. It's not because it's fun to talk about. It's because I think it's better to talk about it than not to talk about it. And maybe, maybe that's time. It's better now than when it becomes a problem, a real problem. And, and I, for one, believe that, you know, someplace that's known for fishing, I have a place to fish, I think. And I know that, you know, you can say that, you know, oh, there's lots of bridges you can hang off the edge of and fish on. But that's, that's not an answer. That's not, that's not, that's not even nice. It's not nice. It's not practical. I mean, if you're, if you're completely physically fit and everything like that, you don't hang out by traffic that's going by 45 miles an hour and climb up a ridge or whatever. But no, no, you're not going to take your five-year-old kid, your six-year-old kid there. Not everybody can afford a boat. So, that's, that's what we're getting at here, is, should we be a community that accommodates at least to a certain extent? Some type of fishing platforms, kayak launches? Maybe that's the way to do it. Boat ramps? And how do we deal with the residential complex? So, whoa, there you go. Can you go ahead and end it? This gentleman right up here. Oh, go ahead, go ahead. I'll get right to you.
I'll, I'll read a little just because I'll forget if I don't. You mentioned about an increase in densities of one, of 15 units per acre. You were talking downtown and I assume possibly in some parts of the DRGR. Right now?
No.
No? Okay, well.
I can say that.
Okay.
I said downtown.
Okay, well, just considering 15 units per acre, if you were considering in the DRGR.
I wish we're not.
Okay, but if we were, it'd be a hundred.
I've played this game with you before, okay? And if I read that in an email tomorrow, I'm going to call you on it, okay?
All right.
Not the DRGR, downtown.
Okay, we won't talk about the DRGR. We'll just talk about the extra 50,000 people that you are talking about adding to the population.
I'm not talking about adding it to the population. I'm saying that someday, there will be that many people.
Okay.
Ben Nelson doesn't want to add them to the population.
Let me get your wording perfectly then. If you add 50,000 more people, there are more beaches in southwest Florida than just Bonita Beach.
Yes.
Okay? And, and that's where we have to be thinking. The state of Florida averages one beach access every five miles. The entire state averages one access every five miles. Little Hickory Island has 10 accesses and two huge public beaches in a two-mile strip. That's 30 times the state average, okay? That's, and it accommodates what's here now. During season, it doesn't. And there's overflow parking on Hickory Boulevard and, so, if more parking or access is needed for the 50,000 people that we may get, okay, we need to move people north of Little Hickory Island, onto Big Hickory Island, Dog Beach, Carl Johnson's, Lover's Key State Parks. And I said this at your last, there's hundreds of acres up there. Lover's Key already has transportation out to the beaches. It has facilities there. It has plenty of acres for parking. It has places for camping. It has seven miles of bike paths. It has bike rentals, wakeboard rentals, kayak rentals. We just need to educate people. It's still part of the city. I mean, even though it's owned by Lee County and leased to the state or vice versa, it's still part of the city. Lee County is trying to, they just finished a report on doing some development on Big Hickory Island, not development, but utilizing it more for parking and for getting people, like walkways, environmental friendly walkways, out to the beach because there are great beaches out there. We just can only get to them by boat. That's where we have to go. Little Hickory Island is overwhelmed at this point. It really is. And, and I know people want to get to the beach, but there's other beaches in this area. There's 56 from Sanibel to Marco Island, 56 beaches. That doesn't count all the accesses in addition. There's, there's another answer besides Little Hickory Island. Little Hickory Island is a residential, residential subdivision with de restrictions just like de restrictions that Bonita Bay has, that Palmera has, that all the other developments here have and that the old subdivisions have. And they need to be respected as much as all those. And that's all I can say.
Good. Thank you. And I think you pointed out something really, really, a couple of really good things there. And it's just, it's a rather obvious thing, but god darn it, they put those beaches in the darn places to get to, right? I mean, I think that's, isn't that, that's kind of a silly thing to say, but it's part of the problem, is beaches being barrier islands. They just naturally are difficult to get to. And it's, it's probably a good thing. If beaches were really easy to get to, well, it wouldn't have the charm and the character that it has there. But that's part of the deal, I think, more than anything. And I think you're absolutely right, is that Lover's Key is a wonderful resource and it, and I think you're, you're obviously right. That's absolutely the future of what will end up being the place where you need to get people to go. And I, I would, I think that the challenge would be to, to the civic organization or the organization that supports Lover's Key or whatever, is to, to do a little better job on getting people to know instead of, you know, sitting there and waiting at docks or wherever or trying to crowd the other places, is to try to get them to where it's, look, there's a place where you can just go park and go down to the beach. But I think that they're going to have to do a better job of making it easier for them once they park their car to get to the beach. Because I, I think that's what dissuades people from, from doing it. So, I, I support what you're talking about there wholeheartedly. It's absolute truth. Yes, Don.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just. I forgot to mention, it, it would be nice if we could get some signage on Hickory Boulevard to show people where Dog Beach is. They think we need a beach as Dog Beach. And they've got dogs running out there all the time. If we could just get some signage that, as you get over the bridge and you get near docks, if we could just have some signage, over next bridge or one mile down, over next bridge, something, so people know.
This is not Dog Beach.
Yeah.
It's not simple enough to do, right? Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't think I need this, but I have.
Oh, we just wanna be sure that everybody-
I'm Mary Ellen Klein, and I live at Sea Isles on Hickory Boulevard, and I would like to know why, talking about traffic and dog beaches, et cetera, that when we get off of seventy-five, and then we come on Bonita Beach Road, and we, we get, oh, I can't think of what corner it is now, there are two signs that say, "To Fort Myers Beach," and it takes a, all of those people, it takes them up Bonita Beach Road and on Hickory Boulevard. The traffic is unbelievable. There is no courtesy with any of these people, so that we can get out of the driveway, or we can turn into a driveway, so we can get out of the traffic. It is, I'd love to know whose idea that was to post that information.
Probably somebody from Fort Myers Beach, I'm thinking.
Well, why did, why would Bonita Beach allow those to be posted?
Yeah, good, good question, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, any, any other ideas when it comes to waterfront access in general, not just beach access? Uh, what about on the, here's, here's one, we, um, we've had a lot, when it comes to beach access, more so than beach access, more so than anything else, we've had requests for kayak launches on Spring Creek. And, and you would think the marine contractor here would know that there's really no place to launch a kayak for the average person on Spring Creek, there's really not. And so we've been looking, actually, the, the city's been looking for a couple of places, someplace, and we're trying to get it to where it's, uh, you know, away from residential complexes, I mean, that's the trick, I mean, you, you wanna go, if there's a place where some people can park, actually park a car, because Spring Creek's a wonderful place to kayak and that type of thing, it's a really awful place, sorry for all of you who live in Spring Creek, not a good place for boating, just doesn't work out real well, it's kinda shallow, but it's a great kayaking place, and it needs to be one of the amenities we have, but we need your help in trying to find a good place to where we can put some type of a park, to where you can actually park your car, put your kayak in, enjoy the day, come back. For your paddleboard, for, it's a one paddleboard that's in the crowd here. See, I was right, there's one paddleboard here, anyway. Uh, yeah, so, that, that's something that we're working on, that I think that, I hope that, that you support us in doing that, because we've had a lot of requests for that, especially since, uh, the, the area down there, uh, that's become Bonita Springs, the Hyatt, and, uh, the, which fish camp part of that, that's all fairly privatized, we're gonna be sure that they keep that boat ramp open, the boat launching ramp open, but that's on the bay right there, and you'll be able to launch a kayak there, but, you know, really, we really need someplace that's a little bit more secluded than that. So any, any comments or ideas on that? Go ahead.
Uh, Alex Grant. Oh, thank you. Alex Grant, again, uh, the Imperial, uh, property, the Land, Imperial Landing property there, uh, that area east of the Old Forty-One Bridge is an ideal location for kayaking, is it not? Because motorboats really can't get along that section of the river. And I just thought you were mentioning the kayaking spots, that's an excellent kayaking place.
Yeah, yes it is, and, and the, the problem is, is that in Imperial River, we, we're pretty well, we're complete with places that we can put in at, we've got the, the new place out there off Kemp Road where we can put in at, and we've got quite a bit of property there, and we just found that Spring Creek, again, Spring Creek, a lot of people in Helen Landing, Bonita Bay, and all those areas, and then across the San Carlos Estates, they, they wanna enjoy that area, and that, and it's, so, uh, if you want to, we'll just go ahead and move along, is that okay? Whoa, okay, go ahead.
No, I, I just-
Here you go, use this one.
I have my, that's okay. I have my, I have my little comment, but I didn't have a comment from you or anybody else who might be here, who might be involved with the traffic problem on Hickory Boulevard because of the signs that direct people to Fort Myers Beach.
Okay. It's a, it's a, it's a good question, and all I can do is, is tell you that, that Bonita Beach Road is a, a county road, that they, they, they see it as an arterial, it's a major arterial, and so far as who, who made the sign up there for Fort Myers Beach, I'll check into it and see, but I'm pretty sure it's the county DOT or whoever, but we'll ask them and see if there's anything they can do about it, or should do about it.
I'd like to know that, and I think anybody else who's here, who lives in the area would like to know.
And, and go ahead and send, if you would, please send me an email so that I can get you-
I don't do email.
She will.
Ah, there you go, you will, okay, thank you very much. I'll try to get you some type of answer, okay? Yes, yes, go ahead.
Hi, Ben, Keith Colton.
Everybody.
Yeah, to second her thoughts about the traffic out there. Last Wednesday, the trashmen were coming by, they come by on Wednesday and Thursday on Hickory Boulevard, and I live in that area, as you know, and the traffic was backed up all the way to the water tower on Estero Boulevard, and that happens every week during the season, and we have to, we have to take something into consideration. Are they giving any thought to building a bridge from Coconut Road over to Lover's Key? They talked about that years ago, and that's a real relief.
Well, Keith brings up something that's, that's been talked about for years, it's, it's, it's an incredibly practical solution, so it hasn't been done, right? That's generally the way things happen like that. Uh, it, it makes complete sense, so they didn't do it, so, so, but, but I, I can't help but believe in the future, at some time, that they'll have to do something like that. Because, I mean, when you, when you look at it, when they built the causeway back in the seventies, I, I'm sure it made perfect sense to somebody, probably the people who own Lover's Key. But, uh, but I, other than that, I mean, uh, you know, for, again, for a community of nineteen hundred people or fifteen hundred people and another community who probably had eight hundred people, uh, no harm, no foul, right? They, they couldn't look this far. Well, now that we can, I think, and there's been a county commissioner or two along the wayside who's brought up this idea, maybe it's time to bring it up again. Maybe it's time to bring it up, maybe there's a lot of people who are gonna hate that, like a lot, you know that? I mean, for a lot of probably good reasons, but, but when you look at it, Keith, when you look at it from a standpoint of somebody who lives in Estero, but, how are you supposed to go to the beach, right? Wouldn't that be nice, to go down to Coconut Road, there's a little beach, Lover's Key? Makes sense.
Well, you can't, you can't bring three thousand, four thousand cars a day and have a bottleneck in Hickory, that isn't gonna work, it isn't working. And I've seen in my, since I've lived here, I've seen at least fifteen rear-end collisions on Hickory, because they have that stop and go, and everybody's looking at the, the ten accesses. We've got about sixty-five free parking spaces, sixty-five, and about a hundred, maybe a hundred, uh, paid parking. It's just not feasible, it just won't work.
I think that, that's somewhere along the line there, that's, that, that, the day has to come when that comes up again, it just has to. And it's probably gonna have to be the people who bring it up, it's gonna be unpopular, so it's gonna have to have a good social support there, so, okay?
Okay.
Anything else? You all right? Let's go ahead and move on to something else. I've gotta keep you here all night. Okay, uh, let's see, infrastructure issues, water management, uh, I think these are all just things that, that, that probably we need to look at down the ways, we're doing a lot on the water management part of it, when we're doing it in conjunction with the DRGR, that's what we're talking about, talking about stormwater quality, flooding, uh, in the downtown area, we're taking care of a lot of that too. Uh, the, the Bonita Springs Utility is taking care of a lot of that, and getting rid of the septic tanks has been a great job. There was a time, I think some of you will remember, there was a time when you, only time you could flush your toilet was low tide, right? There was, I mean, you lived on the water, that was it, you, you know when you could do it, that was, that was gross. Anyway, but it was true, it's true, that's the way it was, I mean, and we've done a little bit more. And I think this one word, balance, right there, is something that, I think that we need to remember in all of this stuff, is that there is a balance, there is a balance. And, and you know what, there's always gonna be one side of the argument, the other side of the argument, I always believe that somewhere in the middle there, there's a balance where we can figure out where we can all live, we can all do that kind of thing that we need to do to survive. High school educational system group, a couple of things that we've worked in the past year, we, we actually worked, uh, with, what is it now? What used to be Edison State College, what is it called now?
Florida Southwest.
Okay, I think it used to, Florida Southwest. We, we worked with them for quite a while to try to get a satellite site, uh, we, we got that close, and then you know what happened? Uh, I, I don't know what happened, all hell broke loose, and, and we got all kinds of different administrators and everything else, so we're kinda starting from scratch like that. I personally think that instead of people commuting all the way to, to what used to be the community college or FGCU, why doesn't Bonita Springs have a site where they can have, don't we deserve higher education? And I know that, that people wish I had higher education, but, uh, don't wait, don't does it the community, and of course, they, they actually asked us at one time, I said, well, you know, we, we just, we, uh, need to figure out what kind of needs the community has. I said, "Can't you look on your roster and see who comes from Bonita Springs?" And they did, and they were surprised, there's a lot of people, thousands of people, people, not just kids, people who attend college, why aren't they here in Bonita? Why do they have to commute? Why are they having to the traffic problem? I think that's part of the, we all talk about mobility and, and, and all these other key words, what, why don't our land use decisions reflect that? It needs to be done, we need to be advocates of that. Of, I know it comes contrary, some people will think, ah, we don't wanna have another school here, or we don't want this, because we don't want worse traffic, doesn't bring worse traffic. It's part of the deal, it's part of the deal to where you don't have such bad traffic. Do you wanna have things near you to where you don't have to go all the way to Fort Myers and all the way to Naples, or do you want to, to, to do silly things? I mean, you, you have, we have to think like this, it's okay, it's okay, it's more than okay. We wanna be a real city, we wanna have a walkable community, we want mobility, let's have some of college, let's have a high school, let's have a high school, let's not put our kids on buses unless they insist on it. They wanna go ride on the bus all day, well, we can arrange for that too, I mean, make them a bus driver or something. Uh, but anyway, uh, look, Bonita Springs High School, this is where we start talking about this, we have great existing schools, Bonita Springs Elementary, Bonita, uh, Spring Creek Elementary, and Bonita Middle School, awesome schools, they have worked so hard to make them great schools, and that's one reason that we're really saving some money up, to really spruce up Bonita Middle School and make it to where, when people come there to the front of the school, they feel welcome already, that's important. Anybody in business knows that, set first impression, you know, I mean, you teach your kids that, first impression, what, what happens when you walk in for a job, and you, you wanna look like a schlupen in there? No, no, you don't wanna look like somebody in prison, and you really don't want your school to look like that's where they're going. I'm sorry, I mean, it doesn't look good right now, but without the fence, just a little bit of vision, you take that fence down, the school is beautiful, it's beautiful, we're gonna fix that, aren't we? We're fixing that. Does anybody else wanna write a check, make it to City of Bonita Springs? We're gonna do that, we're doing it. And then with some of the, that's why, one of the reasons that Bonita Springs High School is important, it's important, it's important for you to get behind, I think, and I wanna see what you think about that, if there's any negatives for the high school, those darned kids, but Bonita Springs High School, just the, the social and cultural pride that it'll bring to the community, it's like those pictures of Riverside Park there, that's one of the things that it does for us, and then, and we don't have to send people like, you know, me when I was younger, and your kids, all these kids, and this young man right here, to Cypress Lake, or to, to Estero, or whatever, should he have that school choice? Fine, that's fine, but should there not be an option to, in a community of sixty thousand people, that you have an actual high school? Why not? So, what do you think about that? What do you think about the necessity? Do you feel it's a necessity? Do you feel passionate about it? Anybody?
Yes.
Um, my name's Amy Mariello, and I work at Bonita Springs Middle School, but I also have three children in the school system right now. My oldest, it just started at Estero High School. We live right here in Bonita, she's on the bus in the morning at six-twenty, actually, she has a very short bus ride, because hers is only half an hour, she's lucky. I know other kids that are living out Terry Street, they're on the bus before six in the morning, um, and why do they need to go that far? We need a school down here in Bonita, Estero is over, what, how many kids are there now? Two thousand kids? Estero's got two thousand kids right now, um, they're over capacity, and, um, a lot of those kids that are going to Estero right now are coming from Bonita.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is someone's? There you go. Carol? That's right. I'm gonna give up the microphone to the next person, did you wanna say something? Hold on, go ahead.
Mine is more of a question, uh, there's been a lot of talk about the YMCA sponsoring a high school, um, over there near, on its property. What's the status of that? And if we ended up with two high schools, are we going to have more capacity than we have students to fill? And by the way, my high school was twenty-five hundred kids, and it did not include my friend.
Yep. You wanna answer? Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get right back to you. Uh, I think that, I think that the short answer to the question is, and I, and I've talked with people at YMCA, I think it's kind of, Marjorie's a little bit on hold right now, uh, the, the, the charter school, but I think that the, the real answer to the question is, there's room for both, there's room for both, just like, right now, there's room for both in elementary schools, you've got charter schools for elementary, you've got charter schools for middle schools, and you've got public schools for middle schools, it's choices. That's the thing about school choice, it's having choices, it's having those options. And charter schools not for everybody, public schools not for everybody, but you know what? I think that being a city and having a public high school, I am a big fan of the public school system. I don't know that everybody is, but I sure am, and I know that there's a lot of great charter schools too, that's fine too, but I think you gotta have both to be complete. Like I said before, when it came to the city, being government-wide or government-right, I think we need to be city-right, we need to have choices, we need to have options. That's just the way it is. Let me go ahead over here, I'll come right to you, go ahead.
I know at one time FGCU was thinking about trying to buy some land and build a high school near them, maybe they would be interested in, uh, working with Bonita to, to create something down here.
Yeah, I, uh, and, and FGCU has a great facility out here for the, for their college students, that they're off Bonita Beach Road, their marine sciences place down there, it's awesome, not many people know it's there, but it's a really great place, we're really proud of that, but I, I think that the president, he's, uh, he's busy with his college, uh, right now, I'm not sure he's gonna be building a high school in the near future, but it's something to look into.
We're looking for it.
Yeah, but anyway, go ahead.
Johnny, again, um, you know, one of the things with, with not having a high school here in Bonita, which I went to Estero, is, is the commute time. You're talking two hours a day driving to and from somewhere, half hour up, half hour back, you know, for a lot of parents dropping their kids off, that's two hours a day, not including the time they gotta stop what they're doing, load up, get in the car, go down the road, you know, and then sit in lines, dropping and picking up, and then, if they've got extracurricular sports, and, you know, football games, soccer games, stuff like that, that they're constantly driving you, you know, it puts a big toll on a lot of the families here in Bonita. And I've, I've got a lot of people that don't, don't have the time to make it here, that are for it, that I went to school with, and they've got children of their own, but they can't make it because they, they're too busy doing things like taking their kids to schools that aren't in Bonita.
Good, thank you very much. Nice. Anyone else? All right, we'll, we'll go ahead and leave this one, but I have to tell you, um, something that I'm, I'm not gonna let go of, I think that it's, it's direly important for this community, uh, and not just for the parents, and, and not just for the educational value, but it's, like I said, I think it's part of who we need to be. It says something about the community, and I was front of the legislative delegation there just yesterday, and I told them, I said, you know what, there, there's a lot of people that talk a lot about how important education is, prove it. Prove it. All right? It's time we prove it. All right. Hey, what is that? That's, that's where some of the schools are, and hey, that's my time there, thank you very much, I'm sorry I'm here. I don't even know what time I'm at, but, oh, it's, oh, geez, that's my bedtime, seven o'clock, seven o'clock. Uh, does anybody else have one, uh, say something or bring something up here before we close up tonight, or are you all ready to go home? You all ready? I don't know if we're gonna let you talk again, Alex, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Would you like to say something again? Closing, closing arguments, everyone? Okay, go ahead.
In, uh, I've heard that some people ask, why in the new sign ordinance does not reflect the feelings of the public about opposition to billboards that has been going back to the days when, even when I was on the local planning agency in two thousand, two thousand and three? Any comments on that?
Yeah.
I mean, we have, uh, you know, like, the big one on old, on new, uh, Bonita Beach Road, you know, where hundreds of bridges, it's like huge, tall, empty sign.
Yeah, that one. Um, yeah, and, and the, the short answer is, is that the, the sign ordinance, actually, the new sign ordinance, actually, for that particular one and some other ones, they're actually contain a way to, that if those aren't used in a certain amount of time, or if they become, or, you know, I was gonna say injured, can't injure a sign, right? That's a personal thing. They become damaged, or something like that, well, then they, they can't rebuild it. So it does contain some language in there, but if you do anything that's any more aggressive than that, you end up buying the signs, that's what you do, so, that became a choice that the city council had to think about.